Get everything recording. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, and every being of us. Amen. So I'd like to call this town council meeting of the town of Apple Valley Wednesday, January 16th, to order. And I'd like to thank everybody for attendance here. We have real calls to do right now.
Mike McLaughlin here.
Debbie Cobb here.
Marty Bliszynby here. Val Edwardsen here.
Danny Bass here.
And so we have a couple changes on our calendar for today. The, our Deuceberry project presentation guys were not able to make it down today. So they're going to push that off probably till next meeting. And because of that, item two on the agenda will also, we're not going to look at that unless we look at number one. And so those two are off the Jennifer data. I move that we table those for the next meeting.
One second.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. And, um, well, I'm going to do what I was going to do anyway. I don't see it on here for some reason. Mayor's update, because I always like to do that. So you guys will indulge me. It's something I would like to take care of. So on a mayor's update, I've just, I've had a lot of mayor meetings the last, gosh, it seems like I've had one every day this week so far, at least, if not two. And even last week had some more. But there's, so there's a lot of stuff being discussed. There's a tourism open house next Thursday. Blake's not here, but there is a Hurricane Valley Tourism group that they try to promote Hurricane Valley. They're tiny, they're minuscule compared to what St. George does, because St. George gets all the money. But they are trying to promote our area as well. Part of their target is in their website promoting is Apple Valley because of Deuceberry Mesa, Low Creek Mesa, some of the events, some of the things we have going on up here. Anything that we have going on is even as a community, they want to have on their website as well. And asked us to pour those kind of things off of them. They meet at the Leverton City Hall. And this coming Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00, they are having an open house. And in conjunction with the open house, they want to have a food drive to benefit the Hurricane Food Bank. Apparently there's a, quite a great need. They mentioned the government shutdown is part of the reasons. You've got people that are hurting that would normally get a paycheck that haven't been because of the government shutdown. But they, they do want to do a food drive at this open house. So it's the Leverton City Hall and it's Thursday, 5:00 to 7:00. Bring some canned goods and they're going to have some food there and some presentations, some video stuff and people talking, things like that. So I wanted to bring up website coding issue. Yeah, I promised you guys a website that's going to be searchable code wise, which is, to me is a huge deal because one I got to go look for it, it takes me hours. And this last weekend, I pretty much had a couple of code books at home along with the website that we currently have. And, you know, I don't know, my, the way it works at my house is, you know, I might have a movie on and I've missed 99% of it because I'm busy looking at stuff and reading and, you know, that's background noise kind of a thing and looking things up on Jerry E's project and things like that, trying to find code and where it's at. So it's, it's a project that I felt is going to be important to the community to be able to be able, find information. And what we've discovered, because we've borrowed code from so many different municipalities, we don't have a RMI PDF in some cases, that that, instead of a Word document, would be the comparison. The Word document's very easy to go into or codify people to what they call codify it and edit it and get it looking nice. I, I wish you guys could see what it is these guys are doing to the code. They're making it beautiful. And when it's all done, it's going to be searchable. But we do have a problem with those PDFs and it's going to cost probably, we don't have an exact number, $1,500 to $3,500 is what the bonus is going to be on that to complete. Tish and I are going to write the check for that. We're not going to be giving that to the town at all. We promised you that and that's what we're going to give you. And it'll be a personal check out of our pocket, not a mayor's thing. It's, it'll, we'll write that out of our pocket to make sure this happens and gets done. We don't know how much it's going to be because we don't know how many pages are involved and how difficult the process is based on, because it's kind of a, how long does it take us kind of a thing? How many pages are there involved? When we're all done though, we're going to have basically, what's happening right now is we have a book, one book, that has everything in it. And they're going to separate these and we're going to have two books. One's going to be the dog ordinance, things like that. And the other one's going to be land use ordinances. And so instead of having those mixed up together, they'll be in two separate books and that way you'll know where to go when you're looking for, you know, certain different issues like the stuff that we adopted from the Washington County, things like that. That stuff that's got to be codified before it's a searchable document. Anyway, so that's what's going on with that. It's probably going to be middle of February before that process is complete. Our website is, 99% there is going live as far as everything else goes. Michelle just noticed a couple of things today that we've got to take care of, otherwise it probably would have gotten live today. But I've got to clean up a couple more issues that have, we want to make sure the history of minutes is integrated into our calendar. And that way you can, even the YouTube stuff, we'll have that on the calendars. So if you want to go back a month, you'll be able to click it and watch the YouTube or the audio or look at the minutes, look at the agenda. All that's going to be in the same item, just stacked up in columns. You can go to any calendar and decide what do you want to learn on that instead of the hunting and pecking that we have right now. And so we'll, hopefully, you know, by next week, we'll be live on that part of it, though the code won't be on there until about, probably middle of February before they finish that process of deciphering the code. Basically you have to OCR or scan that page and then go through every line to make sure that it's exactly right as they can read it. Not, they can't just rely on a computer to do it. They have to proofread every single line and every little indentation that might be a bullet point or a letter or a number. Is it the right letter or number? You know, it's quite a process, tedious, page by page times about 300 pages. And so, anyway, that's where we're at on that. On the website, by the way, we, I did want to set up a veterans page to honor local veterans. If you know of any veterans, we'd very much like to get your information. If you go on to the sample website or the practice, what should we call it? The in-process website, you'll see that we've got Debbie Cobb on there. Anybody that's been in the home services, we'd just love to have you guys send in a bio, photograph, whatever. And I'm happy to get that on there for you because I like to honor veterans in that way. The other thing that we're trying to build as well is a business directory. Anybody that has a business, we want to put in any kind of a photograph, bio, or whatever you want on your business and put that on the website as well to help promote the local businesses. I don't, it's not for, if you're not in Apple Valley, then, you know, I just want the local Apple Valley people. And so just contact me at any time and we'll help make that happen. The other thing that is going to be happening as quick as we have, the website out probably on Monday is things like dog licenses or nuisance complaints. Almost be able to be put in online, same with the burn permit. So if you go to the website and you click on burn permit today, it's going to say you can't have one because you can't burn. And so we're going to, we'll turn that on and off as the season changes based on if the burn permits are even available. So a quick, easy way to find out is can I burn is go to the fire department and click on burn permit. And if it gives you one, then you can fill out the form online without having to come in and it goes right to fire chief's telephone. And he's able to, you know, know exactly as soon as you do that, he has it on his phone. And it, I think will just make it more convenient for you that you don't have to come down here to fill out a, you know, paper form and so forth. So, anyway, thoughts on the website? Any questions for anybody? There's also one other forum on there. It's also a new item I want to bring up. It's a steering committee. We have a conversation with a couple of residents. I just thought it'd be a fantastic idea to put together a steering committee that helps identify any issues that you see with the town. If it has to do with ordinances or codes or anything that you don't like about what's going on, you know, this is your town, not mine. And I want to be that kind of guy that's going to listen to you and, you know, the masses make the difference as far as communicating. And so on the website will be a steering committee application that you can just, basically just fill out. I, I'm interested in being on the steering committee once a month at least. We'll get together as a steering committee to talk about, you know, hopefully four or five hot points that you feel need to be addressed. From there, if it's code related or, you know, you don't like the fire chief's way he's combing his hair, whatever it is, we can direct that to that person.
No hair.
We can direct that to that committee or person or if it's even directed to me, you know, we will see what we can do to help create a town that everybody likes to be a part of. On the same vein, we're going to be sending out letters shortly on the Bubbling Wells area. We've got people up there that I just need to hear from on what you guys want to see up there. It's a mess up there. And I want to hear just from that section of people, how the code is fitting your needs or not fitting your needs. As we currently have it, we have problems, you know, splitting lots and all kinds of different issues up there. And I just want to hear from you guys as well. So I'm just going to do like we do a zoning map. We're going to draw a big circle and say, if you live, if you own property or you're living there, you're going to get a letter from the mayor that invites you in for steering committee online. And I, you can fill these things out online, but I'm going to do this by mail and mail these out to everybody. Any issues on that or a couple of questions? The sales tax. The county is, in these mayor meetings, one of the conversations we've had recently is the cities, oh, how do I start this? The state legislature passed off to the county any sales tax increase because they didn't want to have their hands on it. And so the county says, well, we don't really want to do it either, but the cities are pushing for it, for a sales tax increase of a quarter percent. They want to use that quarter percent to help solve some of the problems they have with regard to transportation. And places like St. George that are running Suntrans and they're trying to expand Suntrans, they have different needs down there than what we do up here. Anyway, they will be passing forward a resolution to us to consider supporting a sales tax increase of a quarter percent. And I'd like to just give you a couple of details of why they feel, what their argument is. As, if you go back, you know, say 10 or 15 years, they say that they're actually collecting more money back then than they are today. As cars get better on the gas mileage and we actually, in their view, are paying less in taxes because we're buying less gas because of the higher efficiency vehicles or in some cases even the electric vehicles that pay no taxes at all for road taxes. Yet our roads are still impacted by all of the traffic and they call it travel miles is what they call them, says the travel miles are still there. Yet the road tax dollars are less and less and less. And now if you think about it, everything costs more and more every single year. And so that puts a squeeze on their budgets that affect their ability to go in and, you know, resurface a road and things like that. It's not something I have an appetite for on passing the resolution or all. I can see where they really need it because it really affects them more than it does us because none of that money will get back to Apple Valley on that quarter percent. It's targeted for some of these road maintenance issues and, and that doesn't mean our town roads. It's, you know, it's just transportation issues, buying new buses and different things like that. And we have none of that. So any money that would be ours goes actually to the county. And then if there's a county road that needs to be fixed in our area, then that would be a benefit to us in an indirect way. But basically it's a quarter percent increase and I'm bringing this up not to sell anybody on it, but tell you what their thinking is. And even when we opt out of this, it doesn't change our taxes at all because it's a countywide decision. And I can tell you from the mayor's meeting, there's an appetite for it, for all the mayors because they're all in a pinch down there because of some of the issues that they will individually get this revenue from. Us, we get zero out of this. But, but anyway, I wanted to bring it to you because it was up in our, one of our mayor's meetings. And anybody have any questions on that?
I do.
Yes, Margie.
Margaret Posowski, one or two for Westwood Pinon. Didn't they just have that for, about four years ago and then they were going to try to do it out of the gas, on the gas, you know, like when you buy gas because there's so many visitors that come? And, and so then they were thinking that instead of taxing the, you know, the residents to tax like people that use gas because when you use gas, you're using the road and there's a lot of visitors that come. So they would, they would also be paying that, that money to, you know, for roads and transportation.
I don't remember which prop it was that had the money for the increase on tax or on gas. As I remember that was, you know, sold as for education, which in a roundabout way was really providing them revenue so they could take less money out of the general fund, basically what was happening on that.
Now, this sounds like a day of boo to me from, from about four years ago. I, I have to go back and look through all the minutes and stuff, but I, that's been brought up before. And I don't know, you know, I think maybe instead of taxing the residents, they should, you know, everybody uses gas or almost everybody uses gas. So why don't we just, you know, tax the gas more so that the visitors that come into this area are paying too for the roads that they're using?
Yeah. Some of this, some of these points you were bringing up were all mentioned and...
That's because I've heard it before.
Well, you know, I'm kind of new on the scene and I wasn't plugged in as you were probably at that time. So correct me if I'm wrong on anybody, but what I gathered from the meeting was, is it was, the last time they had a ballot, they had something on there about raising the taxes on the ballot. And it missed by like 200, I mean, it was just such a small number, 243 votes or something is how small of a margin it was that it lost. And that's why the county says they're not crazy about doing this because it was turned down on a ballot the last time. And it felt like this would be a way of going around the ballot box to impose a tax.
Yeah, because they won't win again.
And that's, well, and what they're doing is they're, they're going to the municipalities and saying that we won't do it unless you guys sign a resolution that says that you want us to. And then at least they feel like they have the vote of the people through the local communities to vote for this.
So this vote no for us?
Sorry?
So just vote no for us?
Well, it's, you know, when the resolution gets put out, it'll probably be another month or so, we'll probably have it on our docket. And that's what I plan on doing is voting no. I don't, it's, it's not going to benefit us. You know, I have no idea. The temperature in the room tells me it's going to go through without a vote anyway.
And our little vote is not going to make a difference if we're the only county that writes that?
That's, that's my feeling. But, you know, when, when municipalities come to a meeting like this and talk about it, who knows? Maybe there's enough people that show up and say, no, we don't want it, that that's what ends up happening. But I just want you guys to be aware that it's happening, that it's, you know, and probably a month before we actually see the resolution. My understanding is the St. George attorney is going to write it, which means Sean, who is out floating in the ocean somewhere right now, so. But anyway, so anybody have any other questions that I can try to fumble through and try not to answer?
Yeah, Rich Kopp, 1193 East Pinon. So if we vote no and it passes through, are you paying the tax?
Well, it's a Washington County tax if they do it. And, and this is, you know, you just have to remember that public meetings are going to be held on this stuff anyway. You know, everybody can show up down there and, you know, say they don't want it. And then Washington County then would just pass it off to the municipalities, which means now St. George could vote in the quarter percent. You know, any of those municipalities want to could vote in that and it'd only affect you when you're in there shopping in St. George. It wouldn't affect us as a county. And so that's, you know, obviously that's another option that, that everybody has, that that could happen. So, but each of the municipalities are going to have to do what I'm doing right now is talk to everybody and tell them what's going on before they can pass that resolution. Two handed the county says, yes, we want to raise taxes. Anyway, that's kind of, I don't know what else to say about it. That's kind of where we're at. But when it comes up again, we'll, we'll talk about it one more time. I want to talk about Moser Lake. You know, we talked in a previous meeting about why don't we fill in the water down there? And I just want everybody to know, I did talk to Kevin about it and he said that he got the backhoe stuck twice down there and had it get towed out twice down there. So I wasn't excited about trying to send him down there, try to fill in that water down there. And it's, it's considered a hazard. And I just need something, a bigger piece of equipment that could go down there to, you know, cut a drainway so it'll drain out or, you know, to backfill it, whatever it is. And so just, you know, I haven't dropped the ball on that.
How do you get a backhoe stuck?
Yeah, well...
I've never been able to do it. I've had it pretty fast.
Yeah, especially when you got that backhoe under.
What's that need on there, Richard? What do you think?
Was that a volunteer?
Yeah, I think it was.
Operator here. I think that was the golf thing.
So, so in our transportation meeting today, the ZTEC meeting, they were talking about different projects. And what's interesting is, you know, I don't know, I just, I live in my own little world and I've got a couple of dogs and, you know, like to sit down and watch a movie and have something to drink once a while. And I just, I feel like that I don't think big enough. And I'm just surprised when I go to these meetings and these guys are talking, not just 10 years out is, that's a joke. It's 20, 30, 40, 50 years out. They're working, these guys have these graphs and things that people have worked on, I mean massive. I brought the paperwork back. It's, might be in the trash, but anyway, I brought some of that stuff back from this meeting so anybody can look at it. I can grab it after the meeting, anybody wants to look at it. But they have a massive list of projects that are earmarked for different time zones. And, you know, John Pike was talking about the bridge between, next to the Maverick, you know, and the new Smiths Market off of Sunr, is it?
Washington Fields.
Washington Fields area.
Between the Smiths and the Land Transit.
Took them 10 years just to get the permitting on that. 10 years. And so that's the kind of timeframes that these guys have to work with. And there's a, you know, a huge amount, just this year, UDOT's going to spend $140 million in Southern Utah on roads and different avenues. And one of the things I was surprised at, I hadn't heard about this, maybe some of you have, but they are going to start on exit 16 construction in February. And I had no idea that that was even on the target. So daytime, that's supposed to be open. Nighttime, they're going to route it through Washington because that's when they're going to be working on that. And it sounds like they're completely redoing those bridges on the freeways, widening it, the whole thing through exit 16.
Where's that at?
Exit 16, Hurricane exit.
Hurricane exit.
You know how we get backed up because of single line traffic to get onto the freeway? They're going to be doing a double lanes through there and...
That's not the Washington one?
No, 16 is the Hurricane exit. And I was, I was surprised and happy because sometimes in the morning commute, that's a, that's a burden.
Well, we've got two lanes going both directions and a bottleneck down the road.
Right. And so it's likely to be worse for a while while they do this construction, but it sounds like they're widening bridges and widening that to go on through there. I don't know, I didn't, he said it's on their website, you know, but he didn't give me the address, so I don't have the website to share with you. But UDOT has a website for those kind of projects and they probably have some conceptual drawings. I just haven't, I know they have one for us out here. I just never went to look at exit 16 and see what they're up to. But just wanted to make everybody aware that I was kind of excited to hear that because it is getting pretty bad. I didn't know it was that high up on their list that they're already starting it. So, anyway, exit 11, you guys know where that was at?
That's going to be, because it's in the middle of Washington.
And so that's probably that underpass, would you say?
Uh huh, yeah.
Is extra, exit 11. And so we're going to end up doing an interchange right there.
They've finalized if it's Main Street or, or Washington Fields Road yet. It's one of those two. But yeah, there's, that's a hot topic in Washington right now.
Yeah. I'll bet it's where that underpass already is. That's Main Street, isn't it?
So not Mall Drive where it's...
No, 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 no.
No, it's in town.
11.
Washington, Washington City has a, Washington City shed.
It's where the Rio development is.
Right next to that. There were the little ponds right there always.
Yeah. And that development's called Rio and there's a fire station right there. I think it's right there.
Uh huh.
And so they're talking about already, I mean, this isn't starting right away, but there, you're going to be seeing an interchange there as well, E49. Let me see if I remembered or forget anything else. Looks like that's all I have for that, so.
Mayor?
Yeah. Yes, Mark?
Well, how much money are, did they, they give to 59, State Route 59 that needs to be fixed instead of those bridges?
I know, I know. 3.2 million. And all that gets us is some shoulders.
No.
Some shoulder widening and that's all we get for... Can you believe it? Think about it, what you're talking about from Mile marker, well, the top of the hill down here where, you know, Little Eskers to Hilldale, $3.2 million was what they were going to spend on that and they're going to start that next summer. But that still is just shoulder widening anyway. So they have, they have some other spot money and stuff. We're, I was talking to them about the Main Street being paved and things like that. They had some hotspot money available that kind of got pulled away from them towards transportation from Hurricane to the national park. And so, and talking with the guy about that, he said that it's losing, they're losing their appetite for that particular project. They don't feel like that anybody's going to park in Hurricane, hop on a shuttle bus or, you know, transportation bus to ride up to the park so they can hop back down to come down to a car. It's just not realistic. And so that hotspot funding money might come back available and they really want to connect those two highways through Rockville because of not just tourism, it's more about economics is what their big thing is. Because Apple Valley can use the work and so does Hilldale. Hilldale is really, they're hurting for jobs up there. And then when you go to Springdale, they're hurting for people to go to work because of the distance from St. George and things like that. They just, it's hard to attract any talent, shall we say, to work hotels and stuff. And they feel like connecting the two would fix two problems. And that's why they're trying to get that on a front burner for us. But I'm not sure if that's the way to happen. It depends on who you talk to.
I just Googled the UDOT exit 16 project and it's 20 pages long, just for that right exit.
Yeah, that's the summary.
Yeah. So, anyway, technically get that. Any questions on anything I've talked about so far? I think that's all I have for right now on mayor's update. So the next item on our agenda is discussion action on town development policies since we skipped the other two. This is going to be a contentious one. And let's be, let me get it out here. I'm sure I've got it in here. I just have to get down to, skip the other agenda items to get to it. Hang on a second. Town development policies. So I've, I've only been mayor for around four short months and there's, when I, when I took the job, you know, my goal is to fix some problems that I could see and I, it was important to me that some of the... was important to me that some of the people that are affected every day by decisions that have been made, that we can, in some way, correct some of that. And I, at the beginning of the year, we had Frank on staff as writing a lot of different code. And I joined the planning commission, I think it was in about May or so. And in May, I was raising my hand to some of the stuff that was put before the town council, or, excuse me, put before the planning commission. And then, it's kinda funny that, and then as mayor, I'm seeing the repercussions of what some of those things I raised my hand for impacted people that were making phone calls to me and wanting to do different things. And it saddens me that, that our code is in such a way that we can't even breathe in this town. We, there isn't anything that can get approved. And we pretty much just, if you call my voicemail, it probably will tell you that, sorry, we're closed. Because that's pretty much what I have to tell everybody when they call in for anything. Do I have anybody here from Bubbling Wells area? Besides you, you're from there, that's what? What was your name?
Pat Baker.
Pat Baker. So, up there, I've got a couple of other people, I can't remember if you were one of them or not, but I've got two people I know that are neighbors of mine, that want to take their ten acre and split it into a five, or whatever scenario is, and they, what they can do, they can go to the planning commission, they can apply for it, but what the development and building policies of the town of Apple Valley say is that, you gotta get a traffic study, and you have to put internal lanes, because if you divide that property into two pieces, that's a subdivision. And we have been, you get the Holt LeBaron property, they have spent, how many months? Nine, ten? Months at least, probably at least ten months, trying to do just that, divide their property into two pieces, and because of that, ten months later, it's still not done. It's almost there, but it's still not done, ten minutes, ten months later. These kids didn't know better, they went out and got a construction loan, and then they came into the town to find out that they have all these problems that we have to solve. And it's been, it's been a real challenge, as I field a phone call, I got two of them last week, that are just right up there by you guys, and it was about trying to divide, and I'm, said, well, you gotta pave the road, you've gotta do this, and you gotta do that. And, and then we still have on there the town policy of, you have to do a traffic study. And I, and I just, I find it, I find it sad that that's where we're at, that we're telling someone to divide the property into two pieces, that we have to do a traffic study, like that's gonna really impact the community up there. I just, you know, because of this policy, there's no common sense that the planning commission has the ability to do because of it. The other issue that popped up, I've got a guy out, and I've got a few people, actually, I've talked to out in Gooseberry Mesa. That's, that's a sticky one, because we don't want fifty, sixty more homes out there without secondary access of some kind, out of there. And so, in that particular case, I explained to the guy that if he's willing to build a bridge, two of them actually, and a road, then he'd be able to let his granddaughter build on one acre. You know, and how realistic is that? And I, but I told him that if you pull off one acre off of this larger piece you have, it's a subdivision, and that means you have to do all of this. Improvements in order to be able to slice off one acre for your daughter to build a house. And the list goes on, you know, with people, I talk to people every day that I feel bad for, I can't even tell you how many people I've had to say no to, and every, just simple things like I'm explaining to you guys now, does anybody think this is the right way to do it? Is there anybody that agrees with this? Margie, you, did you raise your hand there?
Oh, no.
Or you're just swatting flies, sir?
Yeah, mosquitoes!
Janet, France, fifteen sixty-seven North Mountain Drive. I really think we ought to have a work meeting and apply common sense to our code. I really do, because it's so overcomplicated, it's borrowing code from bigger cities, and we're not bigger cities.
And I've talked to a couple people up those bigger cities that we borrow code from, and they're, they're shaking their head, well, why are you guys adopting our code? You guys don't have the problems we have to solve down there, we shouldn't have the same code as they have, because we don't have the same issues and problems. Yet, our code that we've adopted and raised our hand to, and said, yes, let's do this, has absolutely put, stifled the building. You know, we, any guesses what we built last year for homes?
Thirty?
Did...
No.
Is there...
I've gone through all our minutes and notes from seventeen, eighteen, and sixteen, and there's so many projects that haven't not been done. I mean, just twenty, maybe thirty of them disappeared.
The other issue for me, I'm just gonna look one up real fast, if you don't mind me reading. So, building permit fees, we're fifteen percent. That's through the end of the year for two thousand and eighteen, fifty percent of what we anticipated we would have. That's a troubling number, when you're trying to balance a budget. And the number they plugged in was seventy thousand dollars, and we only get fifteen percent of that. And so, what that means to all of you, as a, as a mayor, I've gotta figure out where we're gonna get the other difference of that eighteen thousand to the seventy thousand. Where's that money gonna come from to help pay our bills, because that's what we're budgeting? And it's because phone call after phone call after phone call, I get to say, no, sorry, can't do that. And I just, I've, I've talked to Frank about this, he and I are not on the same page on a lot of things. And, but the one thing that he shared with me was, if you don't like it, you can change the code. And so, that's what my plan is doing, starting today, is changing the code. And I, I feel like, go ahead.
Black Hawk Walters, seventeen ninety-three runway. What you're not taking into consideration is, this is a second draft place in the United States.
A second what?
I'm tired of this.
I know, I was just asking.
A second draft place in the United States. You've approved an RV park for a hundred sites. Do you guys have any idea how much water that uses a month? I do. It's, we have a hundred and twenty-eight sites in Virgin. It uses a million gallons a month. You have put our town in jeopardy with that. Now you wanna build over here, anywhere from forty to a hundred and twenty homes. You gotta have the infrastructure for your water and your sewage and all that before you do this. Property, 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 you have to have the stuff ready. This is a small town. We owe six million dollars in water now. Water, six million, our last census was seven hundred and seven people. How the heck are we going to pay that kinda money? It's everything we can do with your water stuff, do it now. We don't write checks like the federal government. The less government is the best government. And it's like, you're looking ten, twenty, thirty years, yeah, you guys are developers. We came here to get away from people and be a small town community, and you guys are trying to make us big. And that goes against the majority of the people in Apple Valley. And you weren't even elected, you served the people of Apple Valley.
Absolutely.
So, you have to look at all the impact, all the development does. Prove this, improve that, you gotta pay for it, and you're gonna put us in the hole and turn us into a ghost town.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else?
Me?
Yes.
Pat Baker, nineteen twenty-five Red Hawk Road. I don't think you have to do traffic studies, but I think you have to have controlled growth. And I mean controlled in that we're not gonna go out there and build a lot of homes that are half-finished and people are living in them. We've gotta have controlled growth to where we have the water, and we have the roads, and we have the things that might be a little hard for the developer, but he's still got to step up and pay those expenses, 'cause I don't wanna. I live out there, and I like the peace and quiet that's there. And I don't think we can go hard-nosed, but we've got to have controlled growth.
Okay.
Pam Quayle, Smithsonian Road. You know, it concerns me, 'cause you keep saying, you know, one acre lot, or a ten acre lot split in two pieces. And when we start changing this, is it gonna be the ten acre lot split into ten pieces? You know, there has to be some kind of a balance in there. Maybe we're a little bit too strong now, but I don't wanna see us, I mean, I keep hearing, oh, we don't have as much development as other towns, we've gotta go, go, go. And, you know, we have to be controlled, as other people have said. We don't have any infrastructure, and if we push too hard, you know, we're gonna fall off the edge.
Well, if, yeah, I appreciate your comments. I'm not so pro-growth that we have to throw all the rules out. And to, to Blackhawk, you know, when you have the six million dollars of debt, where those payments coming from? To pay that debt? Where do we get those mon- that money from?
That's the problem, we've got ourselves in debt from getting all this water and doing our work. Now, we have to keep growing to pay the bills.
And that's, and I agree with you. I, my wife and I were in that first meeting when they bought the first water company, and I felt like, that first number, wasn't it like ten million dollars, is what they came out with? Ten million dollars?
Correct, correct. No, it was eight million.
For that first...
And the state stepped in and said it wasn't worth it for me.
Anyway, they...
I was here, and we built this fire station, I helped build this fire station, and the town took it away from the fire department. The fire department built this door, not the town.
But my point is, is the debt service, in fact, I don't know how Ray Bennett's for that kind of a question, but I know that he's looked into it a little bit. But the, the debt service on the six million or so that we owe, it's, it's a scary number. And...
I think that's the assessment that I would agree with at this point.
I believe in it, two thousand, one a month, and then another thousand, and then the eighty-five thousand dollar payment ended the year?
No, it's like ten thousand a month.
I believe there's a correct figure.
Yes, about ten grand a month.
That's a lot of money.
Anyway, my...
Water sales are about a hundred and ninety thousand a year.
Yeah, it covers itself. But now we've, well, well, they're a little bit short.
We're relying on impact fees to make a difference.
I know, that's what we're saying. So, we gotta pay extra money for other people to develop. The majority of the people in this room came here to be in a small town.
Absolutely. Frank?
Frank Lindhart. A lot of the debt that we've incurred was because of water lines was installed not to code, substandard, roads were installed without drainage, proper drainage, always was already in our codes. So, if the developers would have been asked to tow the line, we wouldn't have half the debt that we have now. And that's the reason why I, I am, I believe that it's important for us to not get into the same problem as we already have by allowing developments that are substandard, that doesn't have proper roads, that doesn't have drainage, that doesn't have the, the access, that leaving us with, with dusty roads that eventually enough people will complain about, and then we have to use general fund, borrow money to fix it, and use general funds to pay for it? If we just let every developer that comes in here develop to the standards that everybody has to, and I, like I tell you, if you want a different standard, change your ordinance. But at least make it so that we don't, as citizens, in the end, ends up paying for it. Paying for repairs, paying for fixes, getting sued over drainage, because water from the city roads run into their property, because they didn't put in the proper drainage facilities like every developer is required to do everywhere else. So, I think that if we, that's the reason why I think it's important for us to, to tow the line, and, and make whoever it is that comes in, follow the ordinance, install the proper things, and we, things such as drainage in existing subdivisions, we can fix it, but when somebody builds, one at a time, one at a time, but if we keep allowing people to build without putting any improvements in, without fixing the drainage, we're just keep adding and adding and adding to the same problem that we have been paying out millions of dollars for.
Pam, I wanted to address something you said first, was, and that's about, you know, having a ten acre piece put into ten lots. You know, in the, some of the guidelines that we have, and even our planning commission, I just have enough faith in them that if they're going up to Bubbling Wells, they're not going to ever approve a one acre subdivision on ten acres, as a rough number, in Bubbling Wells area. And that in itself triggers that we have other issues that we have to address, even if that did come to the planning commission. I just don't think that there'd be an appetite for anybody doing that, to where you'd have these one acres. And it's, you know, when you're talking about someone, there's, it's different from, for me, if someone has twenty acres and they divide into, or eight and four pieces, if they have access and so forth, that, you know, the five acres is a reasonable size out in Bubbling Wells. They actually have CCNRs that say that nothing under ten acres can be out there. So, I don't think we'll ever have, you know, one acre pieces out there, but I, anyway, I just think that what some of our development policies that we have in place right now stifle the ability for the planning commission to even come up with something that's reasonable, cognitively reasonable, you know? So, Tish, you had your hand up.
So, the majority of the problems that we're facing in Apple Valley proper are drainage and roads. And they're the same drainage and the same roads that have been here for forty years. And we bought all into it, we all built our homes next to dirt roads and drainage, and I've had my house flooded. And I've got drainage ditches that flood, I've lost fence lines, I've lost everything. But that's part of it, and there's nothing we can do to go back, we can't raise Ted Buber from the bed, and call him up here and answer, have him answer some questions, because it's over. And it was the county then, everything was different. Wasn't the town saying, yeah, Ted, go ahead and do it? Because it was the county that said, go ahead and do it. Don't worry about drainage, don't worry about the roads, we got you. Go ahead and put in whatever you want. And that's how Apple Valley started. So, now, we have to move forward and say, we have to fix something from the past, because it's affecting everybody in the present. And that has to do with drainage in particular. The roads, we are trying, we're trying to keep them as graded as we can get, we're trying to get the drainage ditches at least functioning, so that they're moving the water correctly. But every day, it's something new, and it's something more, but it's from the past. Some of the subdivision that the council's looking at is something that was passed in previous administration. So, we're still dealing with the past, but we have to try to make it better, and that's what we're trying to do.
Just to add to what Tish said, you know, I have some people I know that live out in Damrin Valley area, and, you know, that community's been there for quite a few years as well. And the last big storms that we had come through flooded out Damrin Valley, and that flooded out places that they never had floods before either. So, they face the same, it's not just us facing these issues, as our weather changes, and as we get these storms like this, we live in a terrain where the water runs off, and it has no place to go. And when we start building here, sometimes, even with our ditches, and everything that we try to do to make things better, sometimes it's not gonna be a hundred percent, it's not gonna always solve every problem. We can only do the best we can.
You had your hand up, Ron?
Well, where I'm at, I have fifteen acres, and I've been there three years, and they zoned that R1. Now, I never developed that into one acre lots, but I can, because the city authorized me that zone, R1. So, somewhere down the line, you've gotta get with your planning commission, or someone, and say, okay, if you're building out there, and you got twenty acres, we'll give them five acre lots or ten acre lots, and not give them a zone R1. Because once you give them an R1, you're gonna have that condensed housing out there, wherever it is, whether it's in town or out that way, you're gonna load them up.
I, I don't know exactly where your house is, but...
Right before mine. Right before Frank.
But is there any R1 property out there, though, or is this a, is this a...
It was all reason, all that was...
We have thirty acres with R1.
Didn't you request that? Yeah, no, I have to.
Was this before the town or something?
It's been in the last three, four years, it was changed.
Okay, so you requested?
Sure.
All right, I stay corrected, Pam, looks like we do have R1 lots out there. Margie?
Well, since we're talking about development, and I agree with Mr. Walters in regards to the water, I mean, you know, I lived in the desert all my life, and seeing all... I mean, you know, I lived in the desert all my life and, um, seeing all this development coming here, I don't know how we're going to, you know, if, if we keep growing and growing, how are we going to, you know, supply all these people with water? And even though they have water rights, you can't drink that piece of paper. And, um, I, that we're in a, they, they say, they keep saying it's a 10-year drought, but to me, it's more like a third of your drought because even when I lived in Las Vegas, they were in drought. And so, I don't, I mean, Washington County is one of the worst for, um, conservation. And I, I, I just, I just, that, that's my biggest thing about development is the water issue. I, you know, I, I, if we had enough water, or I thought we had enough water, I couldn't care less how much development's out here. But I don't think we have enough water and that really scares me more than paying the water bill, you know, monthly bill. That scares me more because then if we don't have the water, we will be a ghost town. So, that's all I have to say.
And the other thing with the water, I talked to some people today that know this stuff, is the sewage. That's the biggest water on the, on the, the water and aquifers now. We only have 2,000 permits left to build and there's, that's supposed to be for acres. So, after that, we can be in serious trouble with the aquifers because of the sewage because of building. And so, when we have RVs and these campgrounds and this other place... Say, excuse me again?
Who told me we only have 2,000 permits left?
Um, I'm not at liberty to tell you that.
Well, Washington County says that's not correct.
What does Washington County say?
That there's not a limit for us right now. We're not into that, to take them.
Okay, well...
That's Washington County Health Department.
Here's where we're at though. We're...
Oh, yeah. Well, the people in the water department said that once you get past that, our water's in jeopardy.
The, uh, any new development, we would require a onsite type of sewer system that's different from septic's. And it would be something that the developer would put in and, you know, this is what we're working on with Hank Isaacson across the way and we would require on larger developments is, because basically an onsite sewer system that...
I was familiar with that.
Would process that and they can end up, you know, even watering with it. That's how much it cleans it up. And that would be, um, once it's installed and operational, they would, uh, put that into the hands of the SSD. And the sewer district then would be charging fees per sewer connection to operate that facility. So, we have a game plan in place to, um, try to limit those. So, on some of these bigger developments...
Only drawback to that is from the people I've talked to that do that is they have to be fixed every year and it costs major money. So, we'll have to have somebody inspect to make sure they do that because not necessarily that where anybody else take care of doing it.
But that's all part of it is we would be charging connections, just like we do water connections, and that money would collect and that would pay for those, uh, that maintenance of that system. So, I'm going to let someone smarter than I am to figure out how we do that. But that's in concept, um, what we would end up doing to help prevent from having estimate sewer outbreaks anyway.
Yeah, I have to say one more thing. Margaret Rosowski, one or two more Wesley opinions. Well, you know, talking about that development across the street, doesn't Mr. Isaacson want to make more houses out there? So, that's going to use more water and then he's going to have to have a bigger sewer thingy. And that's the technical term.
You've got to show a sewer opinion.
She's so funny.
Sewer opinion. She ain't trying to...
Somehow we got off of a tangent here, but I, I feel like I need to keep going with it. So, my apologies to anyone that might be bored with this, but, um... I, I'm not prepared to answer all of this, Margaret, but I'll tell you that, um, there's people smarter than me that say that, um, having hayfields out here by these turnstiles is, you know, each bell of hay is like four homes of water.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, yeah.
And so, these guys who go out there and farm this every single day, taking water down the aquifer, we can put homes there and be way more efficient than having, um, those, uh, bells of hay come out of there. And so, you have, on both ends of the valley, we have, actually, there's about three of ours there.
Pretty as a hay.
Sorry?
Home burn is pretty as a hay, man.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, but my point though is, I, you know, I'm really looking for feedback from everybody on what you like and don't like. So, you know, no judgment on what you're telling me that you don't like. And it's just the, um, the argument that these homes are going to somehow use more water than if we have, uh, you know, hayfields out there.
Well, every day when I go by that and those sprinklers were going, I was just cringing. Every day, from sunup to sundown.
But, um, on the, uh, on the availability, keep in mind, um, Blackhawk, when, when we have a development that we do an approval on, we require them to put infrastructure in, which is an extra million gallon tank and the water shares to go with that to fill up that million gallon tank. And so, that's taking, uh, water shares that are currently in the valley, assign them to the water district. And that limits someone else's ability to go out and do this farming. And the net gain is supposed to be, you know, quite a bit compared to a bell of hay, how many homes it would... So, it's, it's not just a, oh, there's too many houses using too much water. It's using a lot less water than if they are farming it.
I understand what you're saying.
And they're going to improve that infrastructure in the process as well.
When they approved the golf course. It wasn't but six months later that the wells went dry there just from growing grass. And Mr. Bradshaw sold them all this water that we're talking about to continue. So, only two miles down the road did it start losing water. So, I mean, when I talk to the people in the water system, I've talked all the way up to the state, they all could just give you guesstimates on how much that aquifer will do. And the person I talked to that probably knows more than anyone else says, "We can double our community size." Well, we've just done a lot of that, which our last census was 707 people. We're a little bit more than that, but that was the last census taken. Which means we can have 1,400 people without putting our water in jeopardy. Well, when we just did an RV park for 100 sites and it's generally two to six people in the site, we'll put that in the middle, that's 400 right there. Then you've got that project over here and then you've got that... We're already pretty close to the limit of what our system can carry.
Well, right behind you is Dale. I think he would probably have a different take on that. Do you mind speaking up there?
I don't think so because I talked to his boss too.
So, do we stop building, Dale?
I would, I would say this, at the aquifer study, um, you know, Blackhawk made a really good point. I'm from Rockville. Um, when these builds over here fire up, I used to be the public works director for Springdale, did a midnight connection to Rockville because when these started being farmed over here, it actually pulled water right out of Rockville's water system and had to connect them into Springdale. The aquifer, uh, I wouldn't say that we're in jeopardy of necessarily running out of water. I feel like the projection for the water that Blackhawk was talking about for our build-out, which is a very realistic number, um, we could, we could be able to supply that. But Canaan, um, comes into that play. Canaan has a lot of water. We bought a lot of water in Canaan. And if Canaan can someday be connected in, um, that growth is possible. But as a citizen, now speaking as a citizen, uh, I'm very supportive of the controlled growth. Coming from the canyon, being part of growing, uh, the canyon up there, when my tenure up there, putting in the shuttle system and all of that, uh, stuff came really hard and fast. And really, the people that got choked out up in the canyon is the locals. Blackhawk makes a really good, uh, point there is that what's going to happen is we're going to build so fast if we keep just letting this stuff go, that it's going to choke out the folks that actually built this community in the past, which I would find extremely sad because that's your roots to this community. The aquifer, uh, study shows that, like Blackhawk referenced, the 2,000 units, I think we can do that. But in the same breath, if we're all sticking that straw in the ground all at once in one year, we're going to start, we're, uh, my verb is just about went to hell. But, um, we're going to, we're going to, yeah, we're going to start pulling away from that. Now, you're going to start creating that vacuum in there. And there's got to be that, that balance because once you exhaust that aquifer, um, like Blackhawk said, we're a ghost town.
And adding a little what Dale said, everything he says is exactly, is perfect. There is water in Canaan, but it's $1.2 million to get it to here.
Exactly.
Okay? That's another $1.2 million. And who are we doing when we do that? Developers.
Well, it's not just that. Uh, it, it, the numbers changed to 1.5 million and, uh, and that's, you know, becomes more debt that we're taking. Yeah, we're saying no to development, which is paying for that debt. You know, so it's, you know, there's the, uh, there's the difference and go ahead.
I think I'm sort of being taken out of context and I apologize for that. What I'm saying is controlled growth so that our water system and our fire department's got to grow too with that, we, as we grow, we can cover our public duties to do this. So, we're growing too fast. We're growing too fast. The last bear put up, stop on it with a provision for six months of data study stuff and it's like...
That just reminded me, you know, we started this conversation by me saying, "How many homes did you think we built?" And 16's the answer. And so, if that's too many...
I counted 24, but okay. I've been here longer.
Well, there's, well, I'm talking about permits this year.
Okay.
Yeah, Blackhawk. I can add to that number.
So, we have 33 permits that we issued, but quite a few of them were solar. You know, then you got the outbuilding here and there. We ended up 16 homes is what was built, uh, last year and, uh...
Well, Dale probably knows the water system as good as anybody in all of Utah for Apple Valley and he's just confirmed what I said. We are limited in our growth before, we got to spend another $1.2 million to bring the water from, from some other place. So, we need to slow down, put the brakes down a little bit. And, and we got to think, when we build these other things, they're equivalent to homes. If not more so, because we might conserve our water, but visitors don't.
They don't. I agree. Because I don't, when I go somewhere.
Shame on you, Marty. How many houses are poked by traps full of loam that have been coming in from the, from the, from the plumbing?
Those are lots based on phasing and realistically, that ever...
It's based on phasing, but it's all coming through our plans right now.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at is that you have, um, probably at least a 20, 25-year build-out at least on that. This is not going to, all of a sudden, we have, you know, 700 homes up for the sale. He's developing, putting, uh, streets in and things like that, but it's going to be, I have a lot for sale. Kind of like Cedar Point, you know, where you just have a lot that you can buy and you can build a house on, kind of a thing. So, it's going to be onesie, twosie here. We've built 16 homes in Apple Valley. Most of those are in Cedar Point, I would say.
And that's because it has the roads, the same roads and all. And all these new developments will have that and they'll flow a lot faster.
But that's what we would be requiring, you know, of anybody. So, he'll go in and put in a phase one that's... Absolutely, but it's still, you're talking about someone who has the ability to go out there and farm it, giving us all these water shares that now we can't farm anymore. And the net gain is, uh, way ahead of what the houses will be and the time it takes to build up that. Hey, it's, you know...
With half acre lots?
Oh, yeah. I think so. I think so.
Mr. May, there's more water shares in Utah than there is water. You can have water share, doesn't mean you won't get any water.
Well, they're in the water bank now and someone can use them. And we're pulling them out of the water bank when we give them to the SSD. So, it's, at least it's, uh, it's a, still a gain in that direction where it's a farmer can't be farming with it. Cynthia?
Oh, yeah, Cynthia Browning, Foothill Drive. Um, to kind of get back to the town development policy, um, I was just...
Not while you're...
Being on the planning commission, I have, um, with this firsthand, with this lockdown, basically what it is, it's hard to help our current residents who are just wanting to split their lot. I think we can agree that we can't have everyone locked out and we can't have everyone open to doing whatever they want. But couldn't we change this, um, town development policy? So, it's anyone who's wanting to come in and develop quite a bit, yes, of course, they have to do that traffic study and pay for the roads and arrange for the water. But for our residents who are just wanting to split a larger lot into a couple just so they can, their kids can build on it or whatever, can't we meet like middle of the road with this instead of all or nothing?
I would, I would submit...
Or this controlled, the controlled growth?
I would submit, Marty, would you agree that, uh, that most of the things, most of the people that you have to turn away are the smaller builders, the ones who want the smallest, uh, split?
And I have no problem. Like, I've had a, a lot of people want, they want to go out to Canaan and buy that, you know, zombie subdivision from Kendra and they want to build that out. And, you know, what slows them down is she's asking too much for it because I tell them they've got to have a secondary access, they've got to have turn lanes. I wouldn't back off from that. I think absolutely they've got to have that. And I, I wouldn't change my tune on that one bit. And, um, I try to, uh, explain to them that this is good for you. I mean, this makes it a good development and it makes it easy to sell at that point. And it's, uh, so anyway, that's, you know, I agree with you that that's absolutely when you're talking about, you know, that many homes in that small of an area, they've got to have certain things. Have no problem with that.
So, the compromise has to be then, how many, how big's the split? How many people are going to live there? At what point does it trigger the, the traffic study? What point does it trigger all the other stuff that...
Well, that real big builder's going to afford to do and that, that individual can't.
And, uh, I, that's where I think the planning commission can come in and, um, with some common sense. And that's what I don't like about the development policy right now. It takes away common sense.
Yes.
And it makes it so we can't say yes to anybody on anything. And, uh, I have a problem with that. And, um, there isn't anything about it that I like, um, personally. I feel like that, um, there's, um...
So, we need to have a work meeting, go over proposal changes and look at between, uh, planning commission and town council, have a work meeting with both groups.
Well, on, on the, uh, development policy, we have, uh, I'm, I'm just looking to see what, one thing what I even want to keep on here is I think that there's, um, you have things in here that say that, um, for example, if I want to, um, any kind of a subdivision, for example, triggers that Apple Valley Way has to be improved. And so, if you have, you know, a situation where someone's just dividing their property into Apple Valley Way, it needs to be improved. And, you know, when you're going that far out there to say, "Apple Valley Way can't handle," you know, whatever number of homes as is, and now this developer has to pay for, how many miles of roads would that be to have to improve Apple Valley Way?
Well, I think if we leave it in the commercial and industrial and manufacturing, we leave it in some of that other...
Verbally...
Mention there with, with road access, and we're talking about road access right now. So, that's why I think if we had a work meeting, we can define it and go over it and figure it out. There are some points that might be good and some points that definitely need to be changed.
Can we get a comment? Sure.
Frank Lindhart. About half the stuff here, this here wasn't intended to be, uh, create a bunch of new stuff. Some of it is, but most of the stuff is already in our ordinances, other places. It was meant as a, as a handout sheet to a developer so they could see that, uh, for example, you can go down on the second page, the fire, uh, uh, half of it pertains to fire code. The other is already in our ordinances that you, uh, access from major arterial collector street, that's in our ordinances. Uh, master plan roads are in our ordinances. Uh, road improvements are in our ordinances. So, this, this was designed to, to, as a handout and allow them to easily see he, these are some of the things that they definitely need to look at. So, there's a few things in there that are, and I agree with that, that it was never really my intent that by just one home triggers a traffic study because it, it, there would just be a waste of money. A traffic study would say, "No, you don't need it." Uh, so, but everything else is, a lot of this stuff is already there.
We've heard that repeated on countless occasions, so...
It's just a hands off, uh, as a, it's a, uh, yeah, a, a, a heads up is what I was looking for. A heads up, there, these are the things that are in our ordinances. And incidentally, 90% of that is in every city and town's ordinances as well. So, it is nothing new for a developer.
I don't think that most, um, policies or ordinances would say that, um, the, uh, new access off of 59, uh, that, there's a place in here where we talked about having to improve Apple Valley Drive. uh, that there's a place in here where we talked about having to improve Apple Valley Drive.
Those things there pertains to fire code and the chief needs to decide, uh, one way in.
Here's my point though, is that we have this policy in place that prevents anybody from doing anything. And it even prevents the fire chief from deciding at all. I mean, he can't use any common sense. He can't talk to the fire marshal and his buddies that are fire chiefs in other cities and say, how would you do this one? Cause I know he's had those conversations and he can't have that discretionary, uh, that discretion in the moment of doing anything because of this. And that's why I want this gone. I just want to get rid of this altogether because like he said, it, most of it's in our ordinances anyway. And then if we've got something in the ordinances we don't like, we can tackle those one at a time.
And I'm not seeing where it says even just with one lot with the residential, cause it says commercial residential development, subdivisions, lot splits in excess of three lots. So if somebody's splitting off one five acre lot, that doesn't apply to that anyway. And on the road access and there, it talks about off Highway 59, but it's talking about commercial industrial, manufacturing and business and RV and other parks and subdivisions in that one as well. Not for splitting off 10 acres.
The point is it's still in the ordinances.
Right.
And, and in the meantime though, this takes away indiscretion that the PC might have and any recommendations they might make. And Janet?
Janet Prentice, Foothill Drive. Why don't we plan a work meeting with the Benfries's Town Council and the Planning Commission only just to go over the ordinances that we want to see changed?
All of the permit staff?
Yeah. Fire chief.
I'm actually the statement. Um, so when Meg Ryan came here and did that land use training that we went through, she said that this is very unusual for a town to grow like we have. So we're definitely dealing with some stuff that doesn't go on everywhere. You know, they don't let people move places where there's no infrastructure or services and we have in the past. So she said it's a difficult situation we're in. And she said, uh, what her suggestions were to rein it in was to really be good with the planning commission and trying to advise these people what they're getting into and everything like that. But she said, you know, bring everybody back to here. That's what she was saying. And I specifically asked her about that. She said, in some way or another, you have to get everything focused back into the center.
We need to have the fire chief, planning commission.
If we have meetings, they have to be public meetings. Uh, that doesn't mean we have to have the public have input. They can, they can observe.
Like this meeting.
They have to be open.
More meetings like we've had when Meg Ryan came down.
Right.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Uh, real quick on that, uh, like that Canaan belt that you were talking about out there. The secondary access is only over a certain amount of houses. So just because they do a subdivision, they don't have to have two accesses in it. That's not true. That's, that's not how that law reads. You got anything over a certain amount of houses? I thought it was 50, but Frank says it's 30.
It's 30.
Anyways.
And that subdivision's like 32 or 33 plus what's already there. 10, 11, whatever that number is out there. So that's why the secondary access, but they've got the, they've got a place to put that secondary access. I don't really have a problem with that. It's just.
They own all the property on both sides of that road. So they will benefit greatly because all the growth would go there.
I, um, I, uh, I, I want this gone. That's how I feel and I'm going to explain why. Even, even as I look at this, this is master plan roads, all roads on the town of Apple Valley master road plan must be honored and incorporated into the development of the land of the town. Keep in mind, this is a, someone with a magic marker that went in there and just drew lines on the map and said, here's our master road plan. It's not like we have any traffic studies back it up. We have no engineering behind it. We have absolutely, only thing we have is literally a magic marker on a roadmap that says, here's our master road plan. And as a community, as a town, we're supposed to have a master road plan. But the problem is, is we require them to adhere to our master road plan that is indefensible if they want to take us to court on it because there's nothing behind it. Our attorney has told us even that that's a joke. There's no way you can enforce that. Yeah, we got a policy that says we have to. And that's, and just one more reason that I think this has got to go away. And then we can fix everything else from there when it comes to the planning commission. Like Frank said, most of the stuff is in here anyway. There's a few things that are not in there probably. And, um, that's, that's what I'd like to see happen. I don't know if I've got the support or not of the council, but that's how I feel about it. And we can always construct something else. Cynthia?
So what, what you're saying is the town development policy, since the important stuff's in the various ordinances already, that that policy you're talking about is basically redundant.
We repeal it.
And, and, um, that it can be handled from the.
Planning commission.
Planning commission and town council and staff using common sense.
And at the same time, do the work meeting like we're talking about, because there's probably just few more ordinances. We like, you know, 50% size on garages, you know? When we passed that, we talked about it, but we didn't change it. But, you know, having a 50% of the footprint of a house size on a garage, it's, it's crazy to me that we should be able to.
That's got to change.
Have a larger garage be able to put on there, uh, someone's lot. If, uh, you know, there's, you know, there can be limits, how high it is, you know, different things like that in relation to the house and, but, you know, I don't like that part of the policy as well. So so many little things that we need to tweak. But honestly, I just, I, I get 20 things heading at me at one day and it's to sit down and, you know, try and tweak these things. It's, it's a challenge.
So repealing this policy would allow us to go in and make the necessary changes to make the whole thing better?
Right. Then if it gets rid of some stuff I have a problem with. So I moved that we repeal the development, building policies of the town of Apple Valley. Anybody on board with that at all?
Yeah, I'll second that question.
I've got a question. Uh, this, uh, at this point, you probably want to get some legal advice. It seems to me like this is a land use ordinance at this point.
It's a policy. It's a policy. It's a, it's not a ordinance at all.
It controls land use. It makes it a land use ordinance. So you probably got to do meeting notices, law to law.
Apparently for a policy, you don't have to.
Policy is a procedure. It's a policy is a procedure as well.
It's called a policy.
I understand it's called that, but that doesn't.
When they, when they adopted it, did they have a public hearing?
No.
So then it would not.
That was probably not proper, but we should have.
I disagree. I disagree. Especially if we're, if we're redundant on ordinances. I don't, I certainly don't have a problem with it.
This would end confusion checking in two places.
So, um, I guess we got a second motion. So let's do a vote. Any more discussion though?
Um, so we're still going to do a, a, a work meeting.
Work meeting on ordinances. We really need to.
Okay.
If you want to add up to the motion, you can reword the motion in your own words that states that you do it with. Only if you agree with it as long as you have a work meeting to discuss.
Right. And that's what, that's what I was trying to get to right there is, um, I, I will vote to repeal this if, uh, if we do have that work meeting and, and get together and make sure that our other policies and where this was doubling up, that we fix those problems and make it.
So that sounds like a motion.
So that sounds like a motion, right?
If you want to do that, then we just need to restate the motion.
So you can restate that and we'll just use your motion instead of mine.
Okay. Um, I make a motion that we repeal the development and building policies of the town of Apple Valley. Along with the, the idea that we will meet with our planning commission and town council to go over some of the other issues with our, our code. And making it a little bit easier for, uh, some of the residents on their lot splits that we can, uh, come to the agreement, uh, that's going to help our town.
That's a long motion, but I'll second it.
Very thorough.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. I lost my agenda. Uh, here we go. Approval consent calendar. Ben, do you want to take comments on this?
I'd love to. You missed on the floor.
Before he starts though, I, I want to commend Ben. This is our consent calendar and all these little bubbles on the side are explanations on which each, those items, uh, what it is and, you know, some little memos. And, uh, that's amazing. Thanks for doing that for us.
Yeah.
Do you want to hit that right on number four?
You skip Iowa number four.
Oh, yeah, we'll go ahead and guess. We'll come back.
I'm fine there.
Sorry. Sorry. We'll do, we'll do this first and come back to it.
I make a motion that we approve the check register from December 1st.
Let's let him explain first. I don't know if he's got any details he wants to explain.
Yeah, I do. Uh, so clearly no commentary on the, on the register of transaction through December. If there's any questions, I'd welcome to, I'm, I'm happy to answer those. They're all pretty straightforward. Yeah. So like, like the mayor mentioned, I went through line by line of our operational budget report on our change in net position. And highlighted all the areas where we're say over or under and tried to, tried to give some explanations as to why that would be. Um, the mayor already highlighted some of the, one of the major concerns that we're relying in 20, 20 fiscal year 2019, we're relying heavily on building permit revenue, which is falling significantly under budgeted amounts. The one thing that I, the one high level highlight that I think is critical for everybody, especially the town council to understand is where we're at fiscally as a town. So the budget was created in, adopted, it was adopted in June for the fiscal year 2019. As of, as of December 31st, 50% of the year has passed and we have collected, um, the change in net position shows that we've collected 33% of budgeted revenues for the year. And if you annualize that number for the property tax, because that's the big chunk. So if you annualize that number, it's actually even lower because we collect a big chunk in November and December. So we're at about 27%. But, uh, the mayor approached me about this when we were first, when I, when I first took, accepted the position of the town, he approached me about this problem that he saw and was making, um, budget cuts at that time. So he was preparing for this. So we are at 27% of budgeted revenue collected as of December 31st. As far as expenses, we're at 23%. So we, so if you look at it as a whole, revenue versus expenses, we are under budget in spite of the fact that our budgeted revenues are extremely under. So I, I, I'm not taking any credit for that. I think the mayor's done a great job at understanding our financial position and making adjustments on the fly. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions about the budget that we have, but I think as of, as of December 31st, we've, we're 50% through the year and we're in a good spot to be on target. I'm going to be proposing some, a revised budget in the next month or two for the remainder of the year. And that will, with those numbers, we'll put it more in line with, with our current reality.
All right. Thanks Ben. Do you have any questions? Do you accept the consent calendar? Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar for the period December 1st, 2018 to 12/31/2018.
Second.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. And, uh, back item number four that I skipped over, we have some town property that, um, we want to dispose of. And I thought I should probably do that in the town council meeting. We have the, um, Michelle will seriously miss that is back in the back room, just taking up space. And, you know, if we can get 50 bucks out of it, it'd be happy camper. We also have a dump truck that no one can drive that, um, I'm hoping that we can find someone that, uh, might buy that. I think there's some other miscellaneous equipment that's in storage. And that we probably, I don't know if it's a snowplow or whatever else is over there. But, um, I just think that we need to, um, get on task and let's get rid of that. Because we, you know, it's, it doesn't drive and it's, uh, just, uh, sitting there falling apart. So. Anyway, so I'm just recommending we sell some of this hardware that we have that we don't need. Is that a motion? So, yeah, I moved, I moved that we sell the dump truck and, uh, miscellaneous apparatuses that might come with that as well as the desk.
Do we want to have an auction?
Is that going to be by bid here?
How do we get, want to do it? How do we do an auction on it?
Just have a certain day, post the certain date that we're going to have a town auction and do a town auction. We can get somebody that knows how to be an auctioneer. We've got a couple of people in Price.
Price, he's an auctioneer.
He's an auctioneer and, and we can auction it up.
As a government entity, we could also put it on a public surplus site to be auctioned to a broader audience. That's another option.
Pretty good idea.
Add to your list Ben.
Okay.
Do you want to change the motion?
Yeah, we'll change the motion that we approved. Um, I don't think a desk is, I think it's more of a, you know, Facebook kind of a marketplace item that, um, or KSL, but, uh, the other stuff I have no problem with. Let's, uh, make a motion that we sell the desk as expediently as possible. Probably through a Facebook ad or, um, KSL ad. And then the dump truck definitely let's go with the auction idea on a, you'll have to help me out, Ben, on how to do that, but, uh, we'll do that on our auction website for the, uh, equipment that we have to sell that we don't need.
I'll second that.
And vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Maybe you have somebody that's good at garage sales that can sell the desk.
Yeah, we can know somebody. Yeah.
Well, if you give me 40 bucks, you know, haul it away.
So, um, approval of minutes for November 11th, 2018.
I read the minutes. They're spot on, Michelle.
Yeah, I read them too. I'm good.
Well, she's a pretty amazing one, I have to say. Um, so.
I make a motion we approve the minutes from November 20th, 2018.
I'll second that.
And vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. And events committee. Tish?
So January 26th, next Saturday from 1:30 to 2:30, we're doing a pet vaccination and animal registry. So, um, like the mayor said, hopefully by Monday we'll have the website up. You can do it online if you have a, an animal that doesn't need vaccinated. And then we'll go ahead and get you the tags and get everything that's our big push for January.
Do you know what the price is? Just, uh, is that going, John?
Um, $15.
$15 for rabies and $17 for every other shot. And he'll also have a snake bite, snake venom shot.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I need.
Plus it means 10 and 20.
10 and 10, 10 if they're spayed or neutered and 20 if they're not.
Uh, planning commission, is Cynthia still here or she's stuck it up? So, um, fire department?
Yeah. So, uh, last weekend we had the S-131 advanced firefighter training. Uh, all three individuals passed. And then we got a intermediate fire behavior this weekend coming up in Bryce Canyon again. That's a two weekend class there. And then next weekend we have fire winter school, or winter fire school. That's one weekend. And then the next, I don't know, like three weekends later, we got an air ops class to deal with air, air to ground. Um, after that, we'll move on to task books. So there'll be three firefighters moving forwards, uh, engine boss with task books soon after that. Task book probably roughly has about 50 to 100 hours worth of, uh, on scene data that you're going to collect and pass on. Um, they already mentioned burn season's over. I think it opens up. I think the county opens it back up in March. So I have to check and make sure, but I'm pretty sure it opens back up in March. The weather, everybody's noticed, but, uh, I know multiple people in our town pulled people out of ditches lately. So be careful. The mud's horrible. If you haven't drove in it, don't. So, um, rain and we got it clearing up. So watch out for the ice.
So rain, and we got it clearing up, so watch out for the ice because I'm afraid we're probably gonna have ice towards the end of this week. It looks like it's gonna clear out more than it has been. CPR class, I got the instructor tied into the middle of February, so we'll be posting it. And like I said before, we'll be paying for that from the Fire Department's fundraisers for anybody who wants to get their CPR card. We'll meet up here. It'll probably be a weekend when we're not trained, and we'll get as many people pushed through the CPR class as possible and certified, so... And I think I mentioned this already, but I'm gonna be bringing some Wildland Urban Interface Code towards the Planning Commission and Town Council to possibly get a couple of chapters that just tighten up our codes with Wildland Urban Interface. So chapter four and five are the ones that I'm probably gonna be bringing forth. They kind of interface with us more. So it'll just strengthen our codes is what it's gonna do, so, in our ordinances. And that's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
Junior?
Yes.
Is that training part of it, gonna be certified for federal fires?
Yeah, so that's all moving towards that. This summer, hopefully, we have three squad bosses. So if we're able to get a tag three by next summer, maybe, then, not this summer coming, but next summer, then maybe that'll be in the equation more because of the tag six that we have here. If we can move towards that faster and faster, we will. But the training only comes up when it comes up, and we can't force them to push anything around, so...
Thank you.
Thanks, Junior. And see, Rob Mills isn't here. The mayor's not here. Do you have something in pleasure here, the mayor, or are we good?
I'm taller than him, so just... No, I don't have anything to report. This is a good time of the year to drink the water because it's nice and cold.
All right, code enforcement. Rich Esowski?
Yeah, I have a few things. About a week ago, I met with the mayor and we called and went over some procedures needing lasting about an hour to make sure that what I do is within the policy of the town. I think it was very productive. As far as code enforcing, people come to me, but they're not willing to do a nuisance complaint. And a nuisance complaint, it's not a bad thing. It's private. It just helps. It also, it depends on how you handle it when you do go to somebody's house. And when you do that, you need to take a policy that they violated. I did a week or so ago just because of a neighbor, a dog barking thing. The guy was deaf, so I had to take him around and show him the dog were actually barking. Oh, my gosh. And he was barefooted. That was okay. And I think it eased up. And then also, a little proactive. I got a neighbor that's filming on a zirbitoid, and he asked me if I talked to the neighbor. If you handle it in a certain way, I explained to him that he could do some eight dollar downlights, and if he needs a little help, I'd give him a hand. I find the problem is, as these people move in, like himself, they don't realize that Apple Valley actually has policies and codes and things like that. They think they're just in the wild wilderness and they can do as they please. So it's kind of an information type thing to let them know that to be respectful to your neighbors and everything helps. So he seemed pretty cooperative. I haven't heard any feedback from it. The other thing I did, I delivered a letter for the mayor on a violation. The person wasn't receptive to it, so I did see him through the window and I did push him with the door like I was directing. And it was an easy violation. It was just a few small knocks in the way of a fire truck turning around, which benefits everybody in the neighborhood. So we'll kind of see where that goes. But as far as violations concerned, people just, you know, they just need to turn in a nuisance complaint. The previous code enforcer, I haven't quite started yet, but I'm gonna look into previous violations and see if they've been taken care of or what's going on with them. But I feel like we're going in the right direction, and people are pretty cooperative. I haven't put on my falco vest or body camber yet, so I think I'll be a kid. We'll just take it as it comes in.
Thank you, Rich. Roads and storm drainage. I guess I could take this one. Unfortunately, the ball got dropped by Rob Mills on doing our paperwork for FEMA to get us the grant. And not too happy about that part. But we're gonna... We'll switch companies, and I'll get someone else to do it for next year. It's a once a year opportunity where we can try to get a million, million and a half dollars so we can fix some of these problems we have on a permanent basis. We've got some leftover stuff that I'm pretty upset about. And I think I'll just leave alone this meeting and not talk about it right now because of litigation. But anyway, we were left amass by Rick Moezer from 2016, and I get to clean it up. So anyway, just, I'm just cleaning it up right now. Anybody? Let's see, Mosquito, Margaret?
Oh, well...
Thursday meeting, is it?
There's not much happening, you know, in the wintertime, but come this summer, I'll be giving you the buzz. Right now, we're meeting. Sound their next meeting since February.
Is everybody okay if we just skip public comments? We've had plenty of those today.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll skip public comments. And if I could find the second page of my agenda, I can...
I just have one question. Should we schedule that work meeting for after the next council meeting or prior to the next council meeting on that policy?
Yeah, I think that we need to pick out a couple of dates, send out an email to everybody, and then let everybody respond. I'm more good on this date or that date. You know, because I don't know if this is gonna be during the week or a weekend thing, what you guys are thinking, so...
On our Gmail, we used to get documents where we could edit them. Can you send us some things that we're gonna work on so that we can add thoughts to it beforehand?
All right, and so this meeting, I'm going to adjourn it here just briefly, but what's gonna happen next is we're going to also open up a new meeting, which is gonna be for Water District. But because the Town Council has issues that we have to approve for the Water District, we actually have to have two agendas and two meetings to do that. So I am gonna adjourn, but I need everybody to be quiet because we're really gonna open up a new meeting right after that and vote on a Water District item. So any issues with that?
I make a motion we adjourn tonight's Town Council meeting of January 16th, 2019.
Second?
Vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? And I'd like to call the order of meeting of Town Council, Water District regular meeting dated January 16th, 2019. And what we have on the agenda is Town Council approval of Big Plains Water Resolution, DPW 2019-01. And basically, this is the document that says that we're going to not... We're going to be waiving that impact fee. Those have been paying standby fees all along. As you know, if you sold that property, you're allowed to transfer that fee, that impact fee, to a new buyer. So they have rescinded that part of it, and that would be transferable at this point. And so that's the change on it. And I make a... I move that we approve the resolution as the heads have written it.
I'll second it.
And vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries, and the meeting is...
Make a motion we adjourn this meeting?
Second motion.
Vote?
Aye. Aye.
Long meeting. Thanks, everybody.